Call the meeting of the City Council for March 26, 2018 to order. Please stand as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, councilors. First order of business, Mr. Clerk.
The acceptance of the minutes of March 12, 2018, City Council meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
Order of the Audit Committee for its meeting in March 12, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
Order of the Finance Committee for its meeting in March 19, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief Police Department requesting authorization to expend a donation in the amount of $2,090 from the Campello Association. Police Department intends to use the funds to purchase a ballistic shield for usage by the special reaction.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief Budget Officer of Brockton School Department requesting that the City Council amend the current capital spending limit from $10,000 threshold, as outlined in the ordinances of the City of Brockton, to be increased to $25,000. As known, the capital spending limit for all city departments is $10,000 and has been at this limit since 1993. In order for the school department to continue to replace aging police cars and maintenance trucks, we need to increase the sufficient amount that would allow us to purchase used vehicles that still have many years of useful life.
Accepted and placed on file.
Recommended by the Mayor.
Accepted and placed on file.
Relative from the CFO.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a revocation of Lucas Autobody Mechanical Body License located at 64 Elliott Street, Brockton, in council February 26, 2018. Council of Darren Court motions to continue hearing until March 26, 2018. City Council meeting was promptly seconded by Councilor Lally. A motion carried by hand vote.
At this time, the hearing for the mechanical body license was continued to this particular council meeting, so at this time, I'm going to reopen the hearing, and we've already heard testimony. So at this time, the hearing has been reopened. Councilor Lally.
I, in light of some of the things we've received, and for, you know, for other reasons regarding it, and sort of, I would like to continue the probation, is the word I'm looking for, another month. So I want to postpone this item another month, and then I want to make, once this is done, I'll make a separate motion to give their license an extension for the month to cover it.
Second.
So just on the motion, so the motion is going to be to continue the hearing again for another month, which would bring us till Monday, April 23.
Yes.
2018, and at that point in time, at that point in time, it's going to be known probably as them having an extension so that we can get to that level, correct?
Yes, after this motion, I intend to move to extend their license.
Motion, just before I call the vote.
The discussion is that their license, the reason why the hearing was put on the agenda today is because the license expires April 1st. Just so that you're aware, you're extending a hearing, and from the period of April 1st to your next hearing, they'll be operating under an expired license. So is the vote also to include the extension of the license?
I was going to make a separate motion after to extend the license for a month.
Probably should be made. On the motion, Councilor Cruz.
Point of information to our attorney, do we have the authority to extend the license?
No, you don't. That's the License Commission. So that's what I was trying to explain to you.
So.
What you can do is two parts. They will also need to apply for a new license, once their license expires. So if you had, councilors had concerns, they could be raised, I guess, at that juncture, usually not, but you're not the License Commission, so you can't extend it beyond face.
On the motion again, Councilor Cruz.
Mr. President, further clarification through you to our attorney, I'm just not sure, the License Commission does not grant this license, we do.
Correct, but I'm saying, so if the.
The License Commission doesn't have an action on this, but my thought would be that they would have to renew their license on April 1st, just like anybody else.
Correct, so you could raise your concerns on the renewal of it. But what I'm saying is that you don't have the authority to extend it beyond April 1st.
Correct, they would have to apply just to renew their license on April 1st.
As any business would.
As any business would.
If you have those concerns, they could be addressed in the renewal.
Have to start this process again if we wanted to.
Yeah, two-minute recess. Okay, council's back in session, so the motion that we have before us is to continue this hearing until April the 23rd, 2018, which will be a Monday. Motion's been made and seconded. On the motion, Councilor Sullivan.
Just so the applicants are aware.
Yes.
Since your license expires April 1, it's on you as a business owner to pay the applicable fees to the City of Brockton to renew your license. There's no guarantee that your license won't be revoked on April 23rd, it's a condition precedent, but you can't operate in the city confines of the City of Brockton without renewing your license. That's on you to decide if you want to or not. Our duty today, we're charged to continue the matter to a date certain, which is April 23rd, according to the ward counselor, but you'd have to work with the city solicitor's office to decide if and when you need to pay the specific renewal charges. You need to do that, if you decide to.
March.
What's that?
License expires.
March 31st.
March 31st.
I haven't got the renewal yet. Have you got the renewal for the new license yet?
Why don't you come up to the microphone?
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor, so I can't have him up to, no, stay right there, because there's a motion on our floor, now stay right there, okay? Yeah.
April 31st?
April 1st.
30. Okay, so 30.
This is April 30th?
So it's April 30th.
April 30th.
Yeah, talk to the committee, yes.
Okay.
So then, no problems.
All right, so then.
I'm beginning to get it, but, all right, motion's been made and seconded, continuation until April 23rd, all in favor. Opposed? So we have it to be April 23rd for continuation of the hearing. Next item on the agenda.
Number 12.
Uh, 11.
11?
Yes, sure.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. An order permitting Article 2, Section 25 of the Revised Audits of the City of Brockton, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, Section 2-25 of the City Auditers, be revised as follows, Section 2-25, regular meetings.
Questions on a passage to a third reading by hand vote, all in favor. Opposed? Passes to a third reading.
An order permitting Chapter 17, Article 4, Division 2, Historical District Commission, Division 3, Certificate of Appropriability, Non-Afficality, Or hardships, in council February 12, 2018, ready to refer to Committee on Finance, report was favorable.
Questions on a passage to a third reading by hand vote, all in favor. Opposed? Passes by hand vote.
Deputy Chief Cardoso, 816 Pearl Street, Brockton, the Voting Board of Appeals, as an alternate, in council, February 26, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee and Audit, that report was favorable.
Questions on confirmation by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative, two in the negative.
The order is adopted.
Appointed Bianca Gay of 97 enroll Brockton, to the Brockton Conservation Commission, for three-year term, in council, February 26, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee and Audit, that report was favorable.
Questions on confirmation by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Appointed Francis Here, Fellow, 52 Calypso Drive, Brockton, to the Library Board for Trustees, for three-year term, in council, March 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on confirmation by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative, one in the negative?
Order is adopted.
Order that the City Auditor shall cause to be published in the city's website in PDF or other forms of attachment, a list of vendor payments and other related payments processed by the Auditor's Department, which have public records, in council, February 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the sum of $150,000 is appropriated to pay costs of replacement of the City Hall elevator, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to make this appropriation, the City Treasurer, with the approval of the Mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount, under and pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or pursuant to any other name of authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the city therefore. The bonds appropriated by this order shall be expended in addition to the $335,000 previously appropriated for this project pursuant to a load order of this council adopted on February 12, 2018, and approved by the Mayor on February 13, 2018. Such bonds and notes shall be general obligations of the city, and the Mayor is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any and other action necessary to carry out this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Further ordered, that the City Treasurer is authorized to file an application with Commonwealth of Mass Municipal Finance Oversight Board, to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws, any and all bonds and notes of the city authorized by this vote, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board of the Commonwealth of Mass may require, in council, March 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on a passage to a third reading by hand vote, all in favor. Opposed? Passes to a third reading.
Order that Order 413 of this council, approved in August 22, 2016, is amended to reduce the total amount authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this order, in council, March 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Ten in the affirmative, one in the negative?
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of fellow grant in the amount of $100,000 from Commonwealth of Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, SFY 2018, Mass Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant, to City of Brockton Fire Department, SFY 2018, Mass Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant Fund, in council, March 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Resolve to invite the city solicitor, Mr. Phil Nazarela, to appear in front of the City Council and provide the residents with an update on the contract negotiations with Comcast, in council, March 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Ten in the affirmative, one in the negative?
The order is adopted.
Resolve to have the building superintendent, James Casari, and the procurement officer, Michael Morris, along with Robert Livermore from Livermore Edwards and Associates, elevator designer, to be invited to come before the City Council to update them on the elevator bid process regarding the elevator at City Hall, in council, March 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Resolve to have the building superintendent, James Casari, and the procurement officer, Michael Morris, along with Robert Livermore from Livermore Edwards and Associates, elevator designer, to be invited to come before the City Council to update them on the elevator bid process regarding the elevator at City Hall, in council, March 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Resolve to direct a plan in economic development and executive director of Brockton Redevelopment Authority, appear before a committee of the City Council to discuss the original urban renewal plan, required modifications to the plan, changes in fiscal projections, and specific actions taken to date towards implementation of the plan, in council, February 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Resolve to direct a plan in economic development and executive director of Brockton Redevelopment Authority, appear before a committee of the City Council to discuss the original urban renewal plan, required modifications to the plan, changes in fiscal projections, and specific actions taken to date towards implementation of the plan, in council, February 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Resolve to direct a plan in economic development and executive director of Brockton Redevelopment Authority, appear before a committee of the City Council to discuss the original urban renewal plan, required modifications to the plan, changes in fiscal projections, and specific actions taken to date towards implementation of the plan, in council, February 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative?
No.
Ten in the affirmative, one in the negative?
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of fellow grant in the amount of $100,000 from Commonwealth of Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, SFY 2018, Mass Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant, to City of Brockton Fire Department, SFY 2018, Mass Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant Fund, in council, March 12, 2018, ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Eleven in the affirmative?
No.
Ten in the affirmative, one in the negative?
The order is adopted.
An order permitting Part 2 of the Revised Audits of the City of Brockton, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, as follows, Article 4, Financial Affairs, of Division 4, Chief Financial Officer, of the Revised Audits of the City of Brockton, is hereby amended.
Refer to ordinance, Council Sullivan.
If I could, I just, on behalf of the City Council, I'll just speak for myself, this is in regards to 26 through 30 on the agenda tonight. I'm disappointed and dismayed, the Mayor's office, the city planner, and the city solicitor, with the legislative body, the whole process in place historically under our former government is the legislative body vis-à-vis the city council, we're charged to do the laws, the ordinances in the City of Brockton. Mr. Nazarela stood here a week ago, and he promised the city council, conveyed to us that he would be working within the next week or two with our own legislative council relative to a pending drafted ordinance on marijuana. That was a falsehood, that was, we were misled. Within 24 hours, the next day, they had a ward counselor, and I think they put Mr. Monahan in a bad situation, he wasn't here to hear that, they had him sign it, it was filed by noon the next day. That's bogus, that's shenanigans. I don't understand as a city councilor why we would rush to get this done. As I expressed last week, I'm the chair of the ordinance committee. Historically in the City of Brockton, Attorney Gildea, who served for over a quarter century, would work with Tom Pluff when he was solicitor, Jim DeAmbrose when he was solicitor, and Phil Nazarela as the current solicitor, and the ordinance chair would meet with, say, a Rob May or the Mayor, Mayor Belzotti, Mayor Harrington, to go over pending ordinances. We, the legislative body, draft the laws that govern the citizens, that's what we're charged to, that's why we're elected. This shenanigan is just, it's pathetic, because they're going to argue, City Hall's going to argue, well, this is just a placeholder, don't worry about it, you know, send it to ordinance committee, we can vet it out then, we meaning the city council. No, it's already been played out in the media, it's already been articulated by Mayor Carpenter at Bridgewater State University to the Speaker of the House, I mean, this is a bogus act. Now, Tom Brophy, and myself, and Tim Cruz, Michelle Dubois, and you, Mr. President, we sat for over a year, I expressed this last week, we, for one year, we vetted out what overlay district we should do for medical marijuana. What Mayor Carpenter just did wipes that out entirely, just gone. It makes no sense. I don't think, councilors, that we need to rush on this tonight, they're going to argue with us at April 1st deadline. Well, you know what, this was drafted in January, and it was conveyed to us last week under no certain circumstances, that yes, we're going to work with Attorney Resnick, we're going to work with Attorney Resnick. If you think back, the inaugural War Memorial, what was Mayor Carpenter saying? More open communication, more collaboration, that's bogus, that's a misnomer. Because again, attorney to attorney, and I am an attorney, you don't say something and not follow up. You don't draft something in January and all of a sudden put it in and file in the clerk's office less than 24 hours after saying, oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna work with Shannon. We're gonna work with Shannon within the next one or two weeks. Don't worry about it. We're gonna work with you guys. There's a bunch of, just Malaki. So, I've said what I needed to say. I'm gonna make a motion to postpone number 26 when it's read, and we'll see what happens.
It's just on the motion, Council. Are you just talking item number 26, or you wanna?
We'll go right down the line, Mr. President, if you choose to.
You wanna go right to number 30, or just go one by one by?
We'll go one by one, Mr. President.
Motion's been made and seconded to postpone item number 26. On the motion.
I see. I'm ready to the record. Go first on the 26.
Excuse me. It has to be, yes. Did we read it into? Did you read it?
No.
No. Read number 26 first, yeah, then. That's right.
An audit from ending chapter 27 of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton concerning the humanitarian medical use of marijuana being ordained by the city council of the City of Brockton, Article 3, general regulations that permitted modifications such as 27, pass 24, 3, humanitarian medical use of marijuana.
Motion's been made and seconded to postpone this. On the motion, Councilor Monahan.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You had it.
Councilor Monahan.
Yes, as you, I was not here last Monday, but I also would like to, the reason that I did sponsor these was basically is explained to me as these are nothing set in stone. These are just something that is the starting point as a first draft. As you know, the, I guess the state is starting to take applications this week. I understand Counsel Sullivan's concerns that all of a sudden, and I was sort of surprised myself the next day you had the ordinances here, but I think, even though the way it was done, I understand Counsel Sullivan's concerns, but I think we have to get on with this, at least in getting it to ordinance and having us vet it out. We are the ones that actually are gonna make the decisions on this. No matter what it says in these orders, we decide what's gonna happen with this, with these ordinances in the marijuana in the city. So, it's up to us. And I think if we don't get to work on these now, we could possibly miss the boat. I don't know about any leases being out there or anything else like that, but as far as I'm concerned, nothing can be done until we pass these ordinances or vetted them out in the Audit Committee and then to the city council. So, that's, that was my thinking on it. They, like I said, the state is now accepting applications for licenses. They just finished up two weeks ago, I guess, the final version of the state's rules and regulations on it. So, but I do understand where this Counsel Sullivan is coming from, where all of a sudden that we're talking was about Phil Nizarella, and then the next day there was the ordinances which I was called upon. So, I understand that, but I still think we should go forward and put it through ordinance and get moving on it now, because we did the same thing with, it's not something that has to be done tomorrow. You can take our time and do it, but I think we should at least get started on it. So, that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Darren Court, then. Counsel Fowell.
Counsel Fowell. Just picking up on what Counselor Sullivan said, and I was actually gonna save this for ordinance. It goes a little deeper than that, Counselor Sullivan. About four or five days before our finance meeting, there was an article in the local newspaper, and the city solicitor said that it would be a few weeks before we would be receiving anything. And in my opinion, and we're all entitled to one, this was done so that the mayor could be a hero and get down to Bridgewater State University and stand up with Speaker DeLeo, who, by the way, with the governor and Marty Walsh were against legalization of marijuana, and make this grand pronouncement that we were going to become, as I call it, Brockton DC, destination cannabis. And by the way, I have no problem legitimate marijuana sales to adults. I will tell you that right now. The issue for me is where is it located and what will the impact be on the, on the community? But I will tell you, and we see this in the nation, the integrity in government has gone. And it's a shame, because it's gonna turn people off, and it makes it feel as though you're dealing with people who are ethically bankrupt. And I don't wanna hear that these things are placeholders. If you're the chief executive officer of the city, send me exactly what you are proposing, because I read this stuff. I research these issues. And I wanna go forward, not wondering, well, should I rip this up and wait until they actually come into ordinance and present something more? No, that's not the way it happens. I don't believe the governor sends things to the legislature and says, oh, you know, don't worry about the wording. We'll work on it when it gets to committee. Put into these ordinances exactly what you're proposing. Put in any statutory references and put it before us so that we can send it to our legislative council, and she's not like the proverbial dog chasing a tail. So, I agree with you postponing this. I think all of these should go back, and we should say, what are you asking us to consider specifically? What are you asking us to consider? And then let it go to our legislative council, and then let it go to ordinance, and let's do what we're supposed to do. But I agree with you. This process is ridiculous. And this is, by the way, this is a profound social policy issue for this city. You know, it's one thing to say 17,400 people voted for marijuana, but 16,000 approximately 300 didn't. And when you put together social policy, you don't just cast aside the concerns, the questions, and the issues that the 16,300 had on their mind and that contact us about. You have to blend the two interests and try to come up with a coherent plan that's best for the city. So, if we're gonna do that, let's do it right, because once this is set in motion and licenses are issued and people are up and running, the rest is history. This is the time to control it. This is the time to get it done right. And when we get to, when we get to number 29, I'll have another comment, but that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Darren Court.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. My biggest issue with this is that, like Counsel Sullivan said, the city's attorney is standing here saying that he was gonna work in collaboration with our attorney. And for me, I, you know, I hope this was gonna happen, but to know that the next day this was filed, it is very disrespectful, not just to I, but I think to all of us in the sense of, of course, we do have an attorney, and if this administration would like to work together with all of us, I believe it's important for us to actually know what's going on. I mean, I am 100% in favor of this, but I think the way this was approached to all of us and actually sent to the clerk and filed by my colleague, Counsel Monahan, who was not in the chamber on that day that the city's attorney was talking about, I think it's very disrespectful. I don't have any issue with bringing this downtown Brockton. I don't have any issue with, you know, some of the stuff that actually I've seen in there, because I did take some times to read it, but I think the process of filing that was wrong, because I don't think you can actually do this in less than 24 hours. I mean, if you do this in less than 24 hours, I mean, well, I think you are a genius. And I think it is very disrespectful when people actually know what they were doing, but waiting to come here and tell us something to believe and went on the next day to change it. So, I think it is very disrespectful to all of us, and I think if they really want us to work in collaboration in this, I think it is their duty to work in collaboration with the councils. I mean, when it's come down to doing stuff for the business as the legislative body, I think it is our job to create the ordinances that we would like to move on in this city. And I think when you approach a situation like that, giving the language, which I actually make some notes, I'm not gonna take the time to actually, you know, go through all the stuff that I read in it. And I think it's, it's kinda like painful. And I would hope that the city's attorney would reach out to you, obviously, to actually discuss this, because we rely on you to actually tell us some of this thing that is going there. Because I think it is important for all of us to work in collaboration with you, and you work in collaboration with the city's attorney. So, the moment that, you know, something completely different coming for the worst, and I think it's pretty bad, because I did take some times to actually read through it. And obviously, I mean, some of the stuff that I actually seen in there, I'm not happy with it. But I think the way, like you said, I mean, you cannot just send this to us, you know, today and then go somewhere else and make a big statement. I mean, this is kinda like premeditation. That's the best way to put it. So, I think it is important for, you know, the city's attorney to work with our attorney to determine what's going on, and of course, the Audit Committee to make that decision before we can actually talk about this one. I mean, I'm not arguing against this in any way, but I think there is a way of doing business when it's come down to doing this. So, thank you, Mr. President.
We got, we got the point, Counsel. Thank you. Counsel Cruz, will you? Counsel Cruz?
First off, I have to agree with Counsel Sullivan in that it's a bit of a kick in the teeth to have had Attorney Nizarella stand there last Monday night and say what he did, and then have this filed the next day. But even with that being said, I now then move on. I'm gonna have a question in a minute for our legal counsel that I'm concerned about. But we then have to move on and find, and I would disagree with one thing that Counsel Fowell said. I don't think the mayor looks at this as a placeholder. I don't think he looks at, I think he looks at this as what he wants the rules to be. Now, doesn't matter what he wants the rules to be. We 11 are the only ones that will set those rules. And that's why we have the Ordinance Committee, because truthfully, even though we do, Attorney Nizarella said he was gonna speak with our attorney. Our attorney doesn't know what we want in there until we sit as an ordinance committee and work with her. She can't take a phone call from one counselor and say, oh, Counselor so-and-so wants this and that, Mr. Nizarella. And Counselor so-and-so, that's not how we publicly can operate. We operate, the subcommittee of the ordinance subcommittee will take this. And my only thought is, again, I think, I do think it's a personal kick in the teeth to all of us that with this, less than 24 hours after Attorney Nizarella said what he did, that this was filed. However, we now need to move forward on something. My questions are, is somebody, does somebody else have something prepared to file? Because this is, we need to get moving on at least the discussion. This will take three or four months, I believe, easily, of the ordinance subcommittee meeting and taking views of the full city council and then being sent back. And my guess is even after the subcommittee reports it out, it will probably be sent back to finance for even discussion by the full council. So, it'll be months before we get done with this to begin with. But we now have something, and again, I haven't been able to read most of what he has in there, but this is not a placeholder. Make no mistake. This is what the mayor believes he wants to see happen. We may pass something that has no, has zero of what he wants in there when we get done with it, because we are the 11 that will make that decision. Nobody else. But we do need, if we're gonna postpone this, and I get the feeling postpone this and not act on these, we need somebody to file something soon that we can start as a body working on. One of us, we need to write our ideas of what the ordinance should be if we're not gonna operate on this. And again, I find it difficult to think, in fact, when Attorney Nizarella said that last week, our attorney can't, she doesn't speak for us, and she doesn't, she can't take a little bit of a conversation here or there. That's not a public meeting. We, she can take, in the ordinance committee, what we as a body ask her to do and research that for us and give us advice on what the state law allows and doesn't allow. But to work with the city solicitor's office beforehand doesn't, isn't the way we operate. She does not have the ability to speak for us. So, the fact that he said that, I sat here, was a little surprised, because you can't do that. My question to our attorney is, and she wasn't around, in fact, she was probably about five years old at the time, but this city went through quite a to-do 20-odd years ago, probably. I think Mayor Fowell may have been the mayor at the time. But the Frank's Establishment applied for a, an exotic dancing license or whatever. This city tried to stop it, and we have now ordinances in place on where clubs like that can be. But because they had applied for that license before we had an ordinance, they were grandfathered in. Fortunately, we have not had major issues up there. But my worry and my question is, come April 1st, if somebody applies for a license, and clearly, we're not gonna have ordinances in effect by then anyways, are we gonna be able to say, no, you can't move into that building until we pass the ordinance? Through you, Mr. Chairman, to, Mr. President, to our attorney.
The city of Brockton did vote for the moratorium, so there is a stay. I would advise the council to act rapidly. I don't necessarily know you need to act tonight if the council is willing to continue these orders. It's unclear what the state plans to do for those towns that have not acted. About 50% of the towns in Massachusetts have not acted. It's not clear what they plan to do, because they gave towns about a two-week's notice as far as when they finalize their legislation and when they were going to begin to accept applications. But because you had voted to stay, any sort of action, you have granted yourself some sort of a protective order.
So, the moratorium is in effect?
Until otherwise decided by this council, correct?
Okay. That's my biggest fear. I just wanna make sure that, and we wouldn't have, even if we accepted this tonight and moved forward, it wouldn't have, we certainly won't be acting on these for weeks and months. But I just wanted to, because of how that affected the City of Brockton, 25 or 35, whatever that was, I believe it was when you were mayor. I don't even remember. But it was a long time ago, and the city, because they hadn't moved forward, that business was grandfathered in. I wanna make sure that we still are gonna have the control of having the ability to pass these on. So, then my only, my final remark is that I'm okay if we don't get these sent to ordinance tonight, but I hope that somebody then is going to file something almost immediately so that we can have something to move forward on, because it's next Monday morning that these businesses will start applying for these licenses. And we need to know where we're going. We need to start the process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, point of information.
Oh, I actually too, I think too, Counsel Cruz. I may be mistaken. I thought it was Counselor Monahan who mentioned the placeholder issue that he.
No, I didn't say placeholder.
Excuse me?
Oh, I said it was a, it was a starting point.
It was a starting point, a placeholder, so.
What do you wanna say, placeholder?
Okay, so I, I just wanted to clarify. I wasn't the originator of that premise. But my other point of information, and I would ask the chair to inquire about legislative council, it's April 1st when they start applying to the state. Am I right? So, there will be a, quite a vetting process for anyone who applies, and I doubt the state will turn it around that quickly. So, I would think we'll have a little more time before state approval is granted, and then it comes down to the local level. Would that be correct?
Well, it would be. I would, I would think so. I would think from the state that it would come down to the local level.
I don't have any precedent as to how long the state will take, but I think that's a fair assumption.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, who was, Counsel Rodriguez? No, I didn't see. I'm sorry, I didn't see.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna get a podium next week. I'm gonna be tall, so I can see everything. I'm working on it, trust me.
Well, what I wanted to say was, I was at the luncheon at Bridgewater State University last week when this was rolled out, and it was a fairly well-written speech in which all of the shortcomings and financial strife of our school district was set forth. And then the answer, the solution, was rolled out as recreational marijuana in our downtown area and more. And I liken this to the rollout of the casino, the rollout of the power plant. Very controversial issues that our citizens, certainly my constituents, have strong feelings on. I want us to go slowly and carefully. I was involved several years ago with vetting the location for the medical marijuana. I was on the planning board at the time. I worked, oh, sorry. I worked with Michelle Dubois in, you know, evaluating locations for the medical marijuana, and I thought the West Chestnut Street location for the zone was very well-chosen in terms of not being near any residences. I urge us all to work together and to work well, to find the best locations for this and to craft a smart ordinance that will serve our city well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Rodriguez, on a point, sure, Counsel.
Through you to the attorney. I don't believe this body has ever adopted a moratorium.
Not at least since I've been counsel.
Right. It was mentioned, but it was never ratified as such. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Good point. Counsel Rodriguez.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I made my, I made my feelings pretty well-known to this body the last couple of times that we've discussed marijuana in this city. But at the same time, I agree with, with most that has been said here in terms of the process. And I don't know if everybody actually got a, in a mail, something that came from the Board of Health. And when you look at the, at the governance part of what was submitted by the Board of Health versus what's proposed on the ordinance that we were looking at, it's completely different. You know, the Board of Health wants one thing, and the mayor and the administration want something totally different. So, I believe we got a lot of work to do in this particular thing, because I don't agree with either one of them, by the way. But I, I also wanna, you know, just basically reinstate what was said by Counsel Sullivan and Rand Court. When you have a public servant standing here in front of this body, basically, I think we asked him a couple of times, the solicitor, when he was gonna be ready to propose or submit something to us. And I actually thought he said, you know, six to eight weeks, or we'll get something, something moving. Like, it's like actually an afterthought. We haven't really kinda looked into it. We're looking into it slowly, but we'll get something done. And then the next day, we know what happened. It goes back to the discussions that we've had, you know, quite often, and I keep bringing this up, in terms of the respect of this body itself. It starts out with the fact that, you know, we jump over each other sometimes just to thank people for being in this particular, in front of us when they're actually doing their job. But we can't, we can't wait to thank people for coming. Oh, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Like, like, you know, they're not here being paid, one, to be here, and, two, to do a service to the taxpayers in this community. And I think it's important that if we have to use this as a leverage to send a message to anybody that's listening, that this council might have been a pushover in the past, but it's no longer a pushover organization. That we need to somehow put our foot down and basically say, we're gonna pass something that has the input from the community, we as the community's representative. And, two, that it's something that we can live with. Because basically, I've read both of these things. I can't really live with both of these things. No matter how, no matter how you try to blend them together, I can't do that. I can't imagine passing an ordinance that basically takes the authority of something that is, as Counsel Fowell said, something that passed by merely one percentage point, to take that away from the body that represents the people. And that, in nowhere in this particular document, it even mentions the city council, other than basically on the, on the top where it says hereby orders the council, blah, 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 blah. But when you go through the whole process, the whole paper, the entire package, it doesn't even mention the city council. We basically, it means we passed the ordinance, and we step back and kinda watch this thing implode or do well in some instances. And so, as a member of that, of the ordinance committee myself, I, I have some things that I wanna make sure that are basically made into and put into this ordinance that does not completely take us out of the loop. Because I think we're the only ones that actually have the best interest of the people in this community, and I think it's important for us to demonstrate that. It might not be seen by everybody in here, but I feel that as we move forward with this particular thing, whenever, just like what happens with taxation in this community, it comes back to the council. You know, the mayor and the administration proposes to increase its taxes, but it's the council that increased the taxes. So, the same thing is gonna happen here in terms of whoever is the licensee in this community, but it's gonna come back as the council did this. So, if the council is gonna get blamed for doing this, I think it's important for us to do it and do it right and put our footprint in here so that later on, whoever is sitting at these particular seats will have a serious input in what happens in marijuana in the City of Brockton. I think it's something that will be beneficial in a way to the community, as I, as I mentioned the last, the last time that we talked about this. But I honestly think it needs to be done right. It needs to be done with this council in mind, and until such time that that doesn't exist, I think, Counsel, were your motion second?
It was second.
It was, okay. All right. And I'll stand by that as well too, until such time that we basically have a piece of documentation that actually makes sense.
Counsel Elie hasn't spoken yet. Yes or no, Counsel Elie? I got you down here now.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to say, you know, I do really agree that I think we were, you know, misled. And I really, you know, I really do want to postpone this, send it away, you know, do, do something like that, because frankly, I've had enough with the, you know, the placeholders. Either, whether it's, you know, actually intended to be a placeholder or it's not, and I think Counselor Cruz is right. I think this is, you know, what is intended to go through. We really should be showing up with the complete law or the complete ordinance and then working on it instead of, you know, deciding we're gonna add to it later. Amendments are, amendments are good, but they're supposed to be, you know, for something that comes up later, not actually working on the law. I think that, you know, and as much as, but as much as I do want to postpone this, I think that we should send it to ordinance, because we're behind the eight ball. We're, we need to do something, and I'm not saying send this, send this through and blindly pass it. I'm saying send it to ordinance. It might come out something completely different. But we will at least have, you know, an item to work on. We could take all the words out right from the start, but we still have something, something there. And so, I think that we at least need to get the ball rolling on that.
Thank you, Counsel Elie. Information, point of information, Counsel?
Thank you. Well, before we act on this, on this motion about whether or not to send this to ordinance, it seems to me we have another issue, and that is, it's just been identified that we have, we don't, we haven't approved a moratorium on this. So, we're not protected as of April 1st. And shouldn't we be entertaining a motion for a moratorium? To give us time to write the ordinance that will serve the constituents best.
Legal? Counsel, I have to refer to you to.
The moratorium matter is not before us, so we couldn't even act on it this evening anyhow. But even, 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 just so everyone's clear, even if we accepted these ordinances tonight as presented, which is, shouldn't happen, the third readings would, it would be way past April 1st, just from a timing standpoint. So, there's no harm in postponing it to make sure we get it right and submit either revise, this revised with our attorney, or start from scratch.
And, and, point well taken, because then you're gonna get into, as you just say, the months you're gonna get into. It's April's gonna fly by, May, you're gonna be budget, you're gonna be summer. We could be August, September, to be truthful with you, to be, you know, so, point of order, Counsel Monahan.
Yeah, and I, we love what's said here, and I understand the way this was done is really, it was a bad taste in your mouth. But I think that we have something here that can go to ordinance, and that even though we want, we don't like what happened, by postponing this and not getting to work on this, as we all said, there's a ton of stuff that has to be done. And we, we'll have our legislative council at the ordinance meetings. All this stuff has to come together. But we're gonna be farther down the road. We're gonna be behind the eight ball as we go along if we postpone this. I mean, just to give the mayor and Phil and our city solicitor a slap on the wrist and to prove a point, are we gonna postpone this longer and possibly lose out on? and to prove a point, are we gonna postpone this longer and possibly lose out on some people coming to the city for, and opening these recreational marijuana, or money coming to the city that we want? I don't see, by punishing him, that we are helping out the city. We gotta do what's best for the city. I think we shouldn't postpone this, I think we should just move forward, work on these, nobody makes the decisions, as we've already said, but us. There's a million things going on, a lot of things to think about, but we're the ones that have the final say. The Ordinance Committee, it's gonna come back to this body. So I don't think there's an issue of working on these in ordinance, and getting this jump on it, and moving forward now, instead of postponing it for another two weeks or three weeks, we're wasting time, to me. I mean, I understand that, and you put a bad taste in your mouth the way this was done, but by trying to get back at him and say, hey, that was wrong, we don't like it, and then we're gonna have to come anyway, who's gonna, who's gonna, who's gonna file something in the next two days, that we can put to ordinance? It has to be another two weeks before we get an ordinance, to go to ordinance again. So I mean, we're just postponing this, the inevitable, so why are we gonna take this time and throw it away? I just think we should just move forward, and just make a point that we just didn't like the way it was done. Thank you.
Counsel, okay, I'm gonna make a point, and I know, like, people don't like it when I do make a point from sitting from the Chair here as President, but we're in a different setting. This particular one needs to be postponed. We have an overlay district area, it's right here on West Chestnut Street, there's an operating process right there, of medical use, and there's another one to come in, not too far from the distance of where there is one already. We should be worrying, more concerned about the rules and regulations based upon what's happening with the other marijuana, not so much this one. Why he did this, I don't know. He's gonna have to answer to me tomorrow morning, when I see him, because I'm gonna be in there at 11 o'clock. This here, and he sat with me not too long ago and said, we were never gonna extend an year or have no more medical marijuana in the city. Hello, I know I don't look bright some days, but I'm usually pretty bright in the morning, and I can hear and I can understand. So this here needs to go away. I don't care what anyone's saying, it needs, you don't need to work on this, you don't need one. Number 26, am I right?
Yeah.
I know, we're all hot for that one, and you got the, you got the other one that everyone's chomping at, is the other marijuana, recreational marijuana, that's the one you should be more playing with, not this one here.
Counsel Fowle, I revoke my motion of postponing 26, and I'm now gonna make a motion to table 26.
Motion's been made, and seconded to table, point of information, Counsel Fowle.
Number 26.
On 26. Point of information?
No.
No, you're all set.
Can't do it on a table, you gotta take the vote.
Right, that's exactly right. Okay, motion's been made, and seconded to table, 26. Roll call, vote, Madam Clerk.
Asak? No. Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Darrencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yeah.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
That's eight to three, to table.
Eight to three to table, item number 26, that's the humanitarian medical use of marijuana. Next item, we go to item number 27.
An order amending Chapter 27 of Revised Orders, City of Brockton, concerning the regulations and taxation of marijuana, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, Article III, General Regulations and Permitted Modifications, is hereby amended by adding the following, Section 27-24,4, Adult Use of Marijuana.
Refer to the Committee on Audits and Planning.
Order, Acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 64N, Section 3, Local Option Tax of Marijuana Products, being ordered by the City Council, City of Brockton, to accept the provisions of Section 3 of Chapter 64N of the General Laws, empowering the City of Brockton to implement a 3% tax upon the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operated within the City of Brockton.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Having an order of medical and adult-use marijuana establishments, host community agreement, being ordered by the City Council of the City of Brockton, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 3, Subsection D, and Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012, the City Council of the City of Brockton, authorizes the mayor to negotiate, execute, monitor, and enforce compliance of a host community agreement between the city and a marijuana establishment or a medical marijuana treatment center seeking to operate or continue to operate in the City of Brockton.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Mr. President.
Counsel Fowle.
On number 29, I've struck that, we're on, yes, on number 29.
Yes.
And in response to what Counselor Cruz mentioned, this is the type of information that I think was important to be transmitted from the city solicitor to our Legislative Council. Not that she would make a decision for us, and yes, we would still be in charge, but I have no idea what 94G, Section 3, Subsection D. I have no idea what Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012 say. So when that information is shared with her, it would allow her to pull up that information and send it to either Finance or to ordinance, and if we're, if we're all about streamlining the process and doing it right, that's the type of information that I think is important to transmit, to give her a chance to react, and then have it distributed to us. So with respect to this one, I would ask that someone, I did send an email today, but I'd ask that someone obtain the draft regulations from the Cannabis Control Commission, and send them out to the entire council, along with any other information that's referenced here, 94G, Section 3, Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012, because if we really want to get rolling, we gotta know what we're reading and what we're getting into.
Okay.
So, thank you.
We can take a look at that, Counsel, yes, thank you. That's referred to the Committee on Finance as well.
Order Adult Use of Marijuana Establishments, Licensing, and Regulation.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Appropriation of the total donation, any amount of $2,090, from the Campello Business Association, to City of Brockton Police Department, SRT Unit.
Refer to the Committee on Finance. I file a late motion, please.
File relative to an easement matter in Ward 3 in Linwood Street, and it's been asked to do a late file, so we can bring it forward.
Motion been made, and seconded to accept the late file, all in favor of that? Opposed? Mr. Clerk, do you have the...
I have the late file.
Robin has the late file, I think.
If you could read it right there, Robin.
Yeah.
And that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require the lading out and acceptance of an easement deed from Sturgio M. Delcorus for the benefit of the City of Brockton, for highway purposes only, for the purpose of accessing Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, and Lot 4.
Thank you, that's referred to the Committee on Finance. Counselors, a question's come to me from one of the other counselors, in reference to doing a late file in regards to the moratorium, in regards to marijuana, and I don't know if we, if we can, legal counsel, can we, are we able to?
Tonight?
Yes.
If we could hold off, because I do think that there is at least something filed.
Okay, so why don't we wait until the next, to the next council meeting, then we can take a look at that, at that particular point in time?
Yeah.
Okay, take a look at that particular point in time. Counsel Sullivan?
With all due respect, I don't think there's any harm to this body if we accept a late file and refer it to Finance Committee. If there is a pending matter at Finance Committee, we can dissolve it at that time. I don't think there's any harm in doing that.
Yeah, we can do that as well. Does somebody want to...
Is this coming from Attorney Castro, or Counsel Castro?
No, that was me.
Okay, Counsel, yeah, that...
Okay. Hold, just one, just one sec, let me...
That's fine.
Okay, all right, so...
If you have to delay file, you... We can have a two-minute recess, we can drop something up real quick.
Why don't we take a two-minute recess and do that now? Call the media to the City Council back into order at this time. We do have a late file, you're offering a late file, let's do it, just clean right up.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to submit a late file for the council's appreciation.
Motion's been made, and seconded to submit a late file, all in favor of that? Opposed, we have a late file, Mr. Clerk, would you please read it?
Order in City Council, March 26, 2018, Moratorium to Prohibit Retail Stores from Operating and Preventing Any Business, Licensed Business License to Issue, to be Issued in the City of Brockton, Relative to the Sale of Recreational Marijuana.
And I'm gonna refer that to the Committee on Finance.
Point, Counsel, in procedure.
Yes.
Have a question on that. This was filed last year, as an ordinance changed, is strictly an order gonna be enough to do a moratorium? Through you to a legal counsel, or is it an ordinance?
Counsel.
In order, it's fine. It does not need to be ordinance.
Okay, because last year it was filed as an ordinance.
Well, we put it through as the order, and then we can also research that piece when we get to finance, if we gotta do something, we can always move from that point, how's that, Counselor?
Thank you.
I agree, yeah.
Thank you.
So we're on the right page with it, yes, yeah, okay. So it's referred to Finance, legal counsel, you will look into it to make, yeah, we'll take it from there, you're gonna be with us next week anyways.
Definitely.
Okay, just a couple, just a couple of quick things before we move on, if anyone has any quick business. Last week, I had mentioned that I would be holding a Ward 3 meeting on Thursday evening, March 29th, that has been postponed, just for some personal reasons, so I'm not gonna be able to have it. This coming Thursday will be in April, is when I will be announcing a new date. Counselors, we're gonna be going into April, we're still gonna be remaining here, so I talked with Deputy Superintendent Mike Thomas today, and the schedule is set for us, so it'll be Monday, April 2nd, here for FinCom. Monday, April 9th will be council, Monday, April 16th will be Patriots Day, that's a holiday. We'll be here Tuesday, the 17th, for FinCom, and then Monday, April 23rd, will be council. We have five Mondays in April, so I'm gonna give you, the Monday, the 30th is a vacation day, so I'll give you a day off, but just mark your calendar appropriate, and...
But we have an ordinance being...
And just, just in one, just in one comment, back to what we've been discussing, I really feel confident that when we go to the direction we have to with ordinances, I think the people that I have on the Ordinance Committee can handle it, and I've been saying all along, you've gotta let it do its thing, and you can keep it there for as long as you have to keep it there, but I know the work will get done, because of the people that are there, and I have great caliber in those people sitting in that committee, so, Mr. Clerk.
Did we make a motion to accept? Yes, we did. Yeah, it was by hand, hand vote, yes.
It was hand vote, yeah. Any, Counsel Sullivan and Counsel Lally?
Wish you and everybody here and everybody watching a happy Easter coming up this weekend, so enjoy it with your families, thank you.
Counsel Lally?
Right, I'll be, I'll be quick, I just wanted to clarify, on number 26, I did say that I would, you know, that I wanted to see it move forward, but I was talking about, you know, the items in general, but I didn't realize that we were referring specifically to the medical marijuana, and we already had the zoning, so that's why I voted to table, lest anyone think me a hypocrite. I wanna, I wanna make sure that's settled straight, before they go put it in the paper again, make me keep eyeing the paper.
You only read the paper once, and it's used to wrap tomorrow's fishing, so don't worry about it. Counsel Fowle.
President, a moment of personal privilege.
You may, Counsel.
To try to maybe put something positive on some negatives, may I suggest respectfully, when you meet with the mayor, that you work out an agreement, that if he has ordinances, or shall we say, controversial items, that he consult with you, and perhaps have them go through the council president. Certainly routine appropriations, transfers, et cetera, I don't think there's any problem with that, but I think having the council president, meeting with the mayor periodically, and looking over whatever he may want filed, you have your pulse on what's happening at the council level, and I do think that if that were done with all presidents, whomever it happens to be, I think that the process would work a little better.
Well, I do have to say to you, Counselor, that, you know, the conversation that we had just about maybe 20 days ago, was the fact that he would be coming to me, he and Mr. May with some ordinances in regards to the marijuana situation, but I never saw them any closer or faster than anyone else saw them, and went the same route, so it's gonna be an interesting conversation tomorrow morning, it really will be, because I think it took a twist to a different way, so the communication's gonna come back into play. I mean, I'm here wanting to communicate, and I'm always gonna communicate, and I'm here to work for you people, that's what I'm here to do, and I wanna take care of you ladies and gentlemen, that's my job as a council president, so...
After 35 years, I'm confident your charm will win out.
Yeah, I don't know, sometimes, but thank you, I appreciate that. Just one other thing I do want to mention, because somebody did send an email to me, and it sounds like a gentleman that is really concerned naturally with his neighborhood. During the times of storms, he lives up in the Westland Street, Pleasant Street area, and he just asked me if I would mention, because he felt it was important enough that, as much as with the first storm, they were out of power for about six days because of trees and lines, and a few telephone poles came down, but the gentleman wanted to mention, because he just felt that it needed to be known, and he wanted to have in the minutes of a meeting, that when our city employees came out to do work, clean up in that particular area, they picked up everything that should have been picked up, he even said that when he went out to look, there wasn't even bark, dust, twigs, branches, everything was gone. He said it was amazing to watch the men out there working, different races of all, he says, and I just want to make it known that I appreciated what was done in 45 minutes to make my neighborhood look really tremendous again after a storm, and I just found this interesting to this gentleman, and he said, please, will you read it into the minutes of your meeting? So I think it might be in that Ward 1 area, to be truthful with you, and you would know because you went through, heck, that storm, Counsel Cruz, so, but this gentleman, his name is Mr. Watson, so I just wanted to put it into the minutes, that we appreciate somebody sending something to us, and I sent something back, and I thanked him, and reminded him that we are shorthanded, but being shorthanded, we have a tremendous group of employees out there doing what's right for the city, so I just wanted to make that mention, thank you. Counsel Monahan?
Yes, more of a personal privilege.
Yes, you may.
On Monday, April 2nd, it's gonna, it came out to pay, it'll be 15% donation night, from 4:00 p.m. to closing, to support the Jeff Keppi Foundation, it's on the card, Monday, April 2nd.
Counsel Asak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a moment of personal privilege.
Yes, you may.
Well, I'm sure everybody at home has seen these little posters everywhere, they're posted in public buildings, here up at the high school. April 4th, it's Wednesday, 7:00 p.m., right here at Brockton High School, in the Nelson Auditorium, the Brockton High School Band will be presenting, for the first time, a composition of music that has been written by an Emmy Award-winning composer, Randy Klein, and the piece is named "Brockton," so this piece has been written especially for Brockton. I know Amy Coram and Mr. McCrina have worked really hard on this with the band, and I hope everybody will come out to support them. Tickets are only $4, and I don't know anywhere where you can go see a beautiful concert for $4. It's really well worth it, and it really makes Brockton proud, so please come out, April 4th, at 7:00 p.m., right here at Brockton High School, come support our kids and our schools, and I look forward to seeing everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. All set, any other business, saying done, meeting adjourned.